This meeting is called Words. Jim, you're on. Please. For our place. Stand.
Well, God and gracious heavens, Father, thank you for the privilege to speak together here this afternoon. Thank you for all these that have assembled to do the work of this, your city. But how they say it do, be for your glory and for their benefit. Be with those who are sick, heal each according to your will. Be with those who have loved ones gone before, comfort them. May they always feel your presence. Be with those who are not able to be with us for whatever reason, unless we ask in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in thy great sovereignty and in thy strong law. Please be seated. Carl Ruff, please.
Mr. Ballinger.
Here.
Mr. Fainen.
Here.
Mr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Here.
Mayor Sam Dill.
I, number four, approve to me's, the Department of State Department, to me.
Loopy approved, there.
Motion to sit.
Yes.
Say, Carl Ruff.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. I, number six, any comments from the public? Out of your mind. Say, now. Now, if you do it. No comments. Announcements. I have one announcement. David Chapman called me earlier today from the Campbell County Council Association, and he's asking for donations and for our discretionary money. And I told David that I would give a hundred dollars out of my discretionary account, and if council wants to, we can probably come and check this week. That's where the council comes.
I'll do the same, there.
You mean just get it?
We give to the drugstores. I'm okay.
You give it to the answer?
Uh, I don't know what I've gotten, I don't.
If you do, I don't know, if you have anything else.
I haven't had any idea. I've not checked. Six months.
Okay.
But if I've got any, yeah, I'll get it.
Can I find that from long?
Yeah.
Okay. Under administration, I, number one, approve the library invoice for one thousand four hundred seventy dollars to City Institute of Architecture Outdoors. And in this city, you have to meet her budget, what's the pericent?
Can I ask you something? Matty, did we get a purchase order for this?
No, we did not get a purchase order, sir, because the reason being is still, the chairs had to be, had to have be a deposit made on the chairs before they could start the manufacture of the chairs. And Terry says we can't pay any bill or any deposit until we have that merchandise in hand. So therefore, the friends of the library made the deposit amount.
Which was?
A thousand dollars.
And the twenty-four hundreds coming from where?
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen, I'm sorry.
Is coming out of my library budget, which I didn't have.
That's what we're getting from the fleet and stuff like that?
No, it's just out of the city library budget, the budgets, you know, the city. Capital outlays, you know, capital expenditures.
Okay.
But you do have the money in your budget?
Yes, I do.
I make a motion that we approve the fourteen hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-eight cents for the office furniture.
Does that happen, say?
Certainly.
Carl Ruff.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. Under administration, I, number two, is to add on, it's Resolution 2030-0, and I'll go ahead and do it. It says, "See, Lord, Resolution 2013-0, a resolution on Carl Rufford for receiving and over contributions to the See Lord of the Father. We're asked, Carl Rufford is a citizen and resident of the See Lord of the Father of Tennessee. Carl Rufford has constantly and continually promoted and supported youth activities and programs within the See Lord of the Father. Carl Rufford has endeavored to support the See Lord of the Father's Recreation Department and its youth projects such as youth basketball and baseball leagues. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Mayor and Council of the See Lord of the Father, Tennessee, that Carl Rufford is hereby recognized as to his positive and everlasting influence on the See Lord of the Father and particularly the Lord of the Recreation Department. Be it further resolved, the See Lord of the Father comments amidst Carl Rufford's continual civic and ever charitable contributions to the See Lord of the Father of Tennessee." David. Wish your dad can be here.
Yeah, me too. Appreciate you guys.
Yeah, we appreciate it, Father, your dad's doing. But you've moved back a long way, a bunch of us here for your dad. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Need a vote on that?
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion to approve.
Say.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. I, number two, approve on Harold McDowell, four times with benefits, effective fourth, sixth, thirteenth, effective salary twenty-six thousand five hundred twenty dollars. What's clear to council?
Loopy approved.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. If we let y'all fly, man, we was wanting about thirty minutes' speech, you know? Thanks, man, welcome board. Under Public Works Department, terminate the tour, which would be David Martin, what's clear to council?
Under the circumstance, I make a motion to terminate.
I have a motion up on, I have to say.
Say.
I have to say, Carl Ruff.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. Under Forest Department, I, number one, approve the voting sergeant, Stephen Wallman, detective, effective, the four, oh, six, per detective, effective salary thirty thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. That's a fifty hundred dollar increase. What's clear to council?
Certainly.
Motion, I say.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. I, number two, approve, Andrew Wallman, detective, effective, the four, oh, six, per detective, effective salary thirty thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. That's a fifty hundred dollar increase. What's clear to council?
Certainly.
Motion, I say.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. Under Forest Department, I, number one, approve the voting sergeant, Stephen Wallman, detective, effective, the four, oh, six, per detective, effective salary thirty thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. That's a fifty hundred dollar increase. What's clear to council?
Certainly.
Motion, I say.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. I, number two, approve on Harold McDowell, four times with benefits, effective, the four, oh, six, per detective, effective salary twenty-six thousand five hundred twenty dollars. What's clear to council?
Loopy approved.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. I, number four, approve, Stephen Wallman, detective, effective, the four, oh, six, per detective, effective salary thirty thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. That's a fifty hundred dollar increase. What's clear to council?
Certainly.
Motion, I say.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. If we let y'all fly, man, we was wanting about thirty minutes' speech, you know? Thanks, man, welcome board. Under Public Works Department, terminate the tour, which would be David Martin, what's clear to council?
Under the circumstance, I make a motion to terminate.
I have a motion up on, I have to say.
Say.
I have to say, Carl Ruff.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Let me ask a question over that.
I wouldn't ask too much, if that might go this way.
No, but I want to know if Jim is okay with it.
Yes.
You're okay with it?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes. Motion carries. Under Forest Department, I, number one, approve advertising for bids for turnout here. Gary, why?
Call me all over. Yes, I've got about seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for turnout here, and I was looking to advertise any sets I can get, probably B, eight sets, and then packs, and probably about fifteen sets. But it's only advertising for bids, I don't have to bring bids back to y'all.
You have Gary's representation, Jimmy, have any comments?
Gary needs it.
Okay. Yes, indeed. Could they have a motion?
Certainly.
Have a motion, I say.
Yes.
Carl Ruff.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. I, number two, approve the flag post for free parking. Gary, I mean, we talked about it, and we're shocked.
Yes, we just want to try to erect three flag posts, a large one for American flag, a smaller one for the state of Tennessee, and another small one for the See Lord of the Father. And we just want to try to, Jim said he'd help me, Johnny said he'd help me, and I want to try to do the private donations. It won't cost the city anything, so.
Okay. Since it's free, what's clear to council, if they have a motion to, for Gary to do this, it's on the city side, won't?
Certainly.
I have a motion, I say.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Under ordinance and resolutions, I, number one, ordinance 2013-02, ordinance to establish and update occupational safety and health program plan, revise rules and regulations, and to provide for safety director and implementation of such a program, is the final plan, final reading, what's clear to council?
Make a motion to approve 2013-02.
Have a motion, I say.
Yes.
Carl Ruff.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Okay, we're implementing a program here, have we got anybody that you're going to have is going to be over?
Chief?
He is.
He'll be over?
No.
No, you've had anybody?
No. Always before, that was the city administrator that was over.
That's right.
So now you're in the process of hiring a city administrator.
I don't know what you got in mind, so indeed.
But if nobody else will do it, after the, after you hire a new city administrator, after nobody, if nobody else will do it, then I would consider doing it. If that's what needs to be done.
Right now, he's the safety man, right now, insurance. He'll be the safety manager, we hire administrator.
Well, yeah, but he is administrator, so that makes him the safety man. But you said to implement the, so, I just, you know.
Talk to somebody.
Well, I didn't know what you had in mind. I didn't want to leave it open, if you leave it open, it's not that wonderful, my dear.
I'm pretty sure the department hits you down, it's pretty much the safety of the See Lord of the Father.
Yeah.
We've all been around long enough, and nobody.
So is that what you got in mind now?
The city administrator is usually, has in the past been the safety director, so when you hire a new one, I would assume that would who, that's who it would be.
But as of today, you're one of them.
As of today, I'm doing it.
Okay, okay. Are you good with it? I don't have any problem with it.
Motion carries. Okay, Regulations 2013-02 means to run the budget, 2012-2013 budget. What's clear to council?
Make a motion to approve.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yeah, no, I'm to miss the ordinance 2013-02, free ordinance to amend the personnel policy in respect of employees' drug tests, is the final reading, what's clear to council?
Certainly.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fainen.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes. Motion carries. Do you think he has to come forward, council?
Before you adjourn, I need to get a time to do those interviews.
Okay.
Before we adjourn.
Okay, you're adjourned. Are you done?
Yeah.
Is anybody in the list?
No, I need to get the list from everybody.
Yeah, stable, he's one of them.
Sir, I'd like to address the council. Pause. Come on in. Hi, all right, all of night. Thanks for allowing me to come up here, my name is Steve Underwood, I live on 132 College Hill Road, and what I'd like to address is take a few minutes of your time to talk about the road, College Hill Road. My concern regarding some extremely hazardous conditions on this road, there were minor improvements that were done at the bottom of the road, some paving and some drainage done to keep the mud and debris and things from going down into four lane, and it did a good job of that, and helps control that. However, further up the hill, if you go up on the curve to Hill Lane, I'm not going to go any further than that, although it needs to be addressed too. The road's very narrow, it's been crumbling to the point that there is no road in some places, it's roding the residence driveways, it's roding the ditches, people are forced to pull over into the driveways, allow another car to get through, there's one section down the curve where only one car can get through, the ditches have become very, very deep, there's no shoulders, whenever it rains, or we have a storm up there, it fills everybody's culverts full, and then the leaves and the debris and the mud and pieces of pavement come out into the road, which causes danger to the cars and trucks trying to go up that road, because they don't, they're not able to stop and go safely, there's a substantial amount of local and other traffic up there that take that road as a shortcut to get to the lake, rather than go along up to the red light, turn up the hill. Now, to bypass that congestion, it, it's, I don't think it's a matter of when, but if, or not if, but when, there could be an accident there, and it could be very seriously. So I've done some informal study of traffic, I'm not a traffic person that studies things like that, but I've had time in the last seven days to take a count of the cars that go up that road, just to give you a number. So in the last week, or since the middle of last week, I've counted over nine hundred cars that traveled up that road. On March 27th, there's a hundred ninety-seven cars, March 28th, there's a hundred fifty-six cars, March 29th, I counted two hundred and three cars, March 30th, there were two hundred and eighty-one cars, March 31st, there was two hundred and three cars, and yesterday there were a hundred and eighty-seven cars. Now, this averages about two hundred cars a day, and I only count it from seven in the morning until seven at night, but I gotta sleep and things, and I also could just take a second, try to grab the brain. I took some pictures to share with the council, if you'd like to pass those around of the road, so we can visualize what's, what it looks like, and I submit those photos looking in both directions, so you can get an ideal, negative visual of that. So I also, in comparison, I went over to West Hemlock Street, and of course, we got a little under Branch Road, improvements that were done there, and I used to live on West Hemlock Street, up on top of the hill, and that was a very, very dangerous road, too, at one time, and there was deep ditches there, the road was narrow and crumbling away. I've looked at some of the improvements that's done on that, which I'd also like to submit, and they have sloped the roads, they've widened it a little bit, they've put some ground cover in there, so some grass can grow, in order to allow that water to drain, rather than run out into the road, and it has made it much, much safer. I also submit to you that comparing College Hill Road with West Hemlock is probably not a good comparison, but there is a lot of traffic on College Hill Road, and I'm concerned at the fact that they fixed West Hemlock Road, but not College Hill Road, where it has increased traffic, there are a lot of tourists roll through there, and I feel that the cost of proving this up to the top of the hill would be substantially cheaper than West Hemlock, because that was improved from bottom of the hill up over the top, and also the Hunter's Branch Road that was improved last year, I don't know what that cost, but I'm sure that was pretty substantial, too, which also made that much, much safer. My parents, my grandparents, my great grandparents, they're citizens of this community, I care about this community, it's a good community, has good people, we all care for each other's welfare, and I also know that it is the responsibility of electric officials to look out for our safety and well-being of the citizens, as well as visitors that come to our town and spend money in our town. Basic infrastructures in the town include, like, safe roads, excellent school systems, among other things, and that's what makes our communities thrive and makes us prosper. I hope you will take my concerns, and that concerns of my neighbors, into account, and address the situation and do something about it. I've been told in the past that you guys are aware of it, and that you knew that, you know, know it's something that the road doesn't need improvements, but it's getting worse and worse, the people, the driveways are literally being washed away, it's very, very difficult to go up there and come up and down the road, and I'm concerned for the safety of the community, as well as my neighbors, and I thank you for letting me talk to you, but.
Steve, you didn't realize that on the street you're, the street you're talking about, Road Hill Street, that's, you're part of a city and part of this county.
Exactly. I plan to address the county commissioners, too, about that part, I understand one side of the road, if you're going up the hill, the left side is the city, the right side belongs to the county.
Right.
It's very rough all the way over the hill, I think that belongs to the county, but see if something can be done in conjunction with that. I think the cost versus the safety aspect, when you weigh that out, would be less than, you know, other improvements I've seen in the city, and this is, you know, given the traffic count, although I agree, this is informal, it may be very.
Tell your facts.
Throughout time, that's a lot of cars that go up through there every day, I've seen some near misses and near wrecks, there's a car, in fact, on the curve at the top of the hill in the ditch right now, that's been there for two days.
Probably all those cars you carry, probably, well, yeah, it wasn't a car I was driving.
Could be, could be, no, this is College Hill Road.
I know, tell me about it.
Okay.
But here, we were talking about West Hemlock.
Mm-hmm.
When Mayor Lovett, you was sitting here in my spot right now, she, this street here was blacktop under her, West Hemlock, and one of you got these ditches, this was a water and sewer grant that the city got, where it was those water lines, they done this, you know, that puts it pretty bad.
Well, there are some places down the lower part of the hill, the pavement starts and where it's not been done, where the water lines have been re-exposed, and the gravel was washed up onto the road.
Are you talking about Hemlock?
No, I'm talking about College Hill Road.
What caused you?
Down the very bottom, where that part was fixed, and the gravel was put in there.
I know Jim worked for what, Jim, a couple years ago? And then it bottomed.
But it also, the road's out, it's watching people's mailboxes out, if you see the mailboxes, they're leaning, we've replaced ours three different times, and dig deeper and deeper and deeper, you know, to get the concrete, but then the water just washes in, fills the culverts up, and all that debris goes out into the road, and so you can see cars sliding down the road, they can't get traction when they walk the road.
Right.
And since the road is used by so many people, I feel that it's a concern that needs to be addressed, you know, or taken up with the city, and as I was saying, I want to go to the county and send the same information to them, but I, I was just questioning, is there some sort of cooperation in a situation like this?
Yes.
Because this is a, this is a hazardous situation.
Usually, Steve, we were pretty good with Dennis Potter and the county.
Right.
And we'll, we'll do it any way we can, but like I said, Jim, what did we do, Jim? And the potter did, it was covered.
I don't remember now, but we spent, everything that was done in the city did, did in little part of it, it was in the county.
And it made a substantial difference down there, because it doesn't wash out of the road now, although now the debris's coming up and it's going down there, and starting to fog it up again, I noticed that, that.
Yeah, I see, sure. This is probably the most severe rain we had, about two, three times probably.
Uh, yeah, but it's been like over a period of about three months, so it's been a lot of rains.
Oh, it's been.
Every time it does rain, and so you go down and clean the culverts out, next rain comes down, all that gravel and dirt fills the culverts up, and then it comes right over the road, and then it starts to break the edges of the pavement off, there's a few places down there where there is no pavement, just holes.
Right. And Mr. Sisk was here a week ago, had this problem, I talked to him, and we put a shock rock in the ditch on your dead side there.
Right.
It was a deep, case some car had to drop a wheel off, you couldn't get out, but Dennis Potter, Dennis didn't want to do that, I thought the county man, if he'd give us a rock, we'd put him there, is that right, Jim, we put the rock in there, we, after Dennis gave it to us? Yeah, but, now, Steve, anytime you work for county, you're us, whatever you with, you know, we just leave it, what we can do.
Okay.
Part of it's ours, and part of it's the county's.
Well, it would be my next course of action, as far as seeing that maybe something.
Just find out, Mr. Ballinger's there, he's a street department man, and I want to hear his input.
I'll need to look at it, I won't look at it for a while, but it is, the right side's in the county, the left side's in the city, the right side, I think, is where you're talking about, the driveways going up the hill.
Up the hill, now it's both sides.
Yeah, but the right side, where the driveways come into the street, that is on the county side.
Right.
We put some riprap in that ditch, even though the county road superintendent protested, but we did, did it anyway, to try to stop the ditch from getting deeper, that last year, I guess.
Right. Is that part of the section, Jim, that we're going to work on, when we go blacktop?
No.
Can you make it part of it?
No, because it's not on one of the, it is not one of the streets that is approved by the state to spend that STP money on.
Could it be one of the streets that was approved by this council to go ahead and blacktop it?
Well, now, if the council got the money, yeah, but he's talking about widening the street.
Well, at least shoring up the curve of the side of the street, you know, I understand, there on my life, it's a narrow road, and I totally understand that, and there's not a whole way to block it to go, I just finished paving my driveway, it's nine hundred feet long, it cost me fifteen thousand dollars, and I understand that, too, that I had the same situation to correct it, and it has corrected it, by, you know, gently sloping the ditches, put water bars in, and we planted vegetation in order to let that absorb that water, because the water comes down like a river, it's terrible.
I can look at it on the left-hand side and see what we can do on the city side. I'm not ready to comment on it right now, but I will look at it.
What about getting with Dennis Potter, and look at the right-hand side, and see if you and Dennis, we can take care of the left-hand side, let Dennis take care of the right-hand side, and maybe we can work together and get it fixed?
Yeah, I don't care.
If, you know.
We'll look at it, too, yeah, because eventually it's going to be in the four lane, that's going to be everybody's problem.
Thank you.
Steve, that's not asking too much, is it?
No.
Okay.
We'll look at it, and I'll make a recommendation, you know.
You get back to this, Jim, and let him know what your viewpoint is?
Would there be a timeline in regards to that?
I'll do it within a week.
Thank you.
I'll look at it within a week, and have some idea how to approach the situation. I can't speak for the county road superintendent, but I will look at our side.
Well, let me ask you this, when I address the county commissioners, would that be approved for, or should I go directly to Dennis Potter?
How would it go, Dean's first, I believe, Steve?
All right. Yeah, it's a commandment, because it's a, the way the road is, and part of its, the city's and part of the county's, it's always been an issue, and.
We've got several streets, by the way. We were pretty good with each other, tried to correct the problem.
And I've also argued with my father that maybe we should become part of the city.
Didn't you recognize it, Steve?
Yeah.
A long time, but it got old on me.
I have, yes.
Was it?
We all have.
We have. Lots of you tomorrow on both of us.
Well, good, hard, but.
Are you back here?
I'm retired from teaching, yes, so my mother passed away, so I'm living with Dad now, helping him out.
Hey, get with Dennis, and slowly come up, we have to get with Jim.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Steve, good seeing you.
Same here.
Jimmy, we'll get. Some of the administrator.
Interview, interview. Okay, yeah, if everybody would get me their names, then would the seventeenth and eighteenth, that's Wednesday and Thursday, would those days, no?
If in the evening.
What day would work?
I'll be out of town the entire week.
The entire week?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's wrong next week?
Then, yeah, next week? Next week, Wednesday and Thursday, and next week, which would be tenth and eleventh, would that work?
So we're talking about in the evening?
In the evening time? Sure, yes.
Anytime I can see, everybody.
Okay, what after six work for everybody else?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Is it Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tenth and eleventh.
Yes.
Six o'clock, is that what you said, I'm sorry?
Yes, six o'clock works for everybody.
Do you have anything? Is that right?
I think I press it my way.
Yes.
Okay, now, are we still all interviewing all of our local people?
Yes, sir.
And then if somebody wants somebody else out of town, that's fine, too. And if we need to extend a couple more evenings, we can do that.
All right.
All right.
Two things that were discussed at the workshop that somehow got left off the agenda, the eleven street bridge project, do you want to bring that up?
We could, if we're, yeah.
I talked tonight, but we have a, a grant from T-Doc, federal money, to replace the bridge over the railroad at eleven street. It's a twenty, eighty-twenty match, the state, if we do it, the grant is ready to be signed and sent back, it's a given, it's not something we apply for, we've got it if we just sign it and send it back. The state will take care of the whole engineering, the whole bit, we pay twenty percent, which is not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The first estimate, ten percent of it, was eighty-six thousand. They ask that if we accept this grant, we need to send the first payments toward our twenty percent in with this grant, which is eight thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. So whatever the players or the council, they're waiting on our decision, if we turn it down, then they'll let somebody else have it, but if we want to accept it, we kind of need to do so and tie it up, so it's a pleasure of the council, you know, the bridge has been, it's defective, it's going to have to be replaced, we have the opportunity to get it replaced now for this, I don't know when the opportunity will come around again, so it's just a pleasure of the council, whatever you want to do, but if you want to accept this grant, we kind of need to do it, and you sign it, and send it back.
You know, the worst part of that is things, you know, that's one of our new bridges.
Yeah. But it is defective, and one of these days, they're going to close.
I know.
So, you know, it's up to you all, we have this grant.
What's the state coming, once you hear and inspect all our bridges?
Yeah, they inspect everything, even the railroad under, underpass, and everything.
You won't bid it, I've looked at it, you won't bid it.
But they do everything, they bid it, we don't have to do anything, except our twenty percent matching part, and they want the eighty-four seventy when we send this, if we, if y'all decide to accept it.
How long we got to decide on it, Jim?
Pardon?
How long have we got to decide? How long have we got to decide?
Uh, they're asking, let's see, this letter was dated March the fourteenth. They're asking for a reply within thirty days.
So we're going to have to make a decision tonight, tonight, yeah.
Really, yeah.
What other choice do you have?
Pardon?
What other choice do you have?
We can turn it down.
Sure, you can turn it down, but you, then you've got a bridge that.
Right.
That's negligent and it'll get somebody hurt.
Yeah.
Or if it falls down on somebody, uh, then, uh, you're going to put the full, the full bill.
Right, yeah. So really, realistically, I don't see if we have a great, you know, a lot of choice. But when you look at it like you're talking about, you know, if, if we turn it down, then we assume our responsibility.
That's not right. We shouldn't be saying.
Liability and the whole bits, you know.
We shouldn't be saying or accept these bridges that these people wants to give us, that they get finished.
But this is, this does have a cap on it, unlike the Aston Street Bridge, you know, we got into it and just it ran over and over and over. It does say that, uh, this means it will pay no more than a hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars of matching cost. Any matching cost above the figure will be covered by the department, by T-Dot. So anything over this, you know, this is the top and it could be less.
Did they say when they're going to start on this project?
Uh, they will put it in the, in the schedule, in their scheduling as soon as they get this back.
Jimmy, I know you've read it, I've read it. It's quite a, you can curve it too.
Yes. Yes, anytime you get eighty cents on the dollar, it's, if we have the money to match it, it's a good deal for the city.
We need to check the tour and, and Jim, and we, and find out before we got some money out. We've, we've got, we should probably have to come up with.
Yeah.
I don't see any other choice. I mean, it's better to give twenty percent than it is a hundred percent.
Yeah.
If you ain't got the twenty percent and you're going to have to hand in, you, you'll never get to a hundred.
Right. Whatever the pleasure of the council, if you want to accept it, fine, you know, but I think we do need to vote tonight.
Yeah, Jim's recommendation.
You need that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Does everybody agree with that?
We're going to vote on it. We're going to vote on it. It's not, it's not I make a motion, everyone vote on it, is that it? You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and send eight thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, to T-Dot and, uh, tie up the grant and then go somewhere and tie it back to money, somewhere. Yeah.
Have said.
Give, give Terry the, the right to locate the money.
Yes.
Our sector.
Call roll.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Jim, what else, please?
The corner market, it was on discussed. We won't talk about it tonight. Mr. Robinson's here.
He didn't.
Um, I think most of you, Jimmy has seen a copy and I don't know how many of you have seen a copy of the appraisal, so I think most of you know what it said. So, uh, do you want to discuss it or do you want to set up a meeting with Mr. Robinson, with Reed and?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Anyway, you want to have.
I've seen the appraisal, yeah, I've talked to the appraisers, I haven't read it yet.
I know, I know, Steve. It's what you want to do.
That's probably best. Yeah, I'll, I think, I guess he's represented by Mr. Hatmaker and I'll be happy to.
Okay. Is that okay if you might, or say, maybe with Reed and?
Okay.
So you need to, Jim?
Yep.
Jim, is there anything else you got?
All right.
Do you think? This may be adjourned.
Call roll or the municipal section twenty thirteen beer board, call roll, please.
Mr. Ballinger?
Here.
Mr. Fane?
Here.
Ms. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Here.
Mayor Stankfield?
Here. Uh, we do have an application for Tennessee CVS Pharmacy for a beer permit. Chief, you want to comment on that?
Yes, they met the, uh, they met all the setbacks as far as being close to churches, but they're good.
I'll make a motion.
Got a, got a motion here a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Fane?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mayor Stankfield?
Yes.
Okay, the other item on the airport tonight is, uh, we have three businesses, uh, that I understand that, uh, involved in underage beer selling.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we did have three businesses that were, uh, the Alcohol Beverage Commission, Special Agents from Alcohol Beverage Commission, uh, came to the city and did a undercover sting for like a better, and they sent in underage, underage, uh, people with their ID showing they were underage and three of our businesses did sell to them. And it would be, uh, Chinatown, Ninja Hibachi and Los Corumbres, Mexican restaurant. It's the first offense for Ninja Hibachi and Los Corumbres. It's the second offense for Chinatown.
All right, you, you have those present, people present?
Yes, we, uh, I believe, uh, a lady from Chinatown's here and I believe this lady, you represent Ninja Hibachi, ma'am? Okay. Uh, Detective Wallen went and took the, uh, took all the letters and, and delivered them. So Los Corumbres was notified that they were supposed to be here. Are you here from, okay. And they're all here, sir.
All right, do they, do they have anything to say?
Do y'all have anything that you want to bring before the beer board? Anybody? Nobody? No, sir, this is, this is, uh, this had happened one time before, uh, when the Alcohol Beverage Commission, of course. Set the fines, the last time the fine, the minimum fine that the beer board set was five hundred dollars for first offense.
Can I move on to the second offense?
Second offense is up to you. I would recommend a thousand.
When does it come to a point that we do something with their license? I mean, I'm just asking. Was it presidents that we have?
Third. I, I really believe, uh, looking at our beer ordinance, that it, uh, it can happen anytime, but it usually goes to the third offense. And I think they, at that time, there's a maximum of fifteen hundred dollar penalty.
Maximum fifteen hundred dollars.
Plus, uh, revoke the license if it's a pleasure.
Okay, could it be for so many days or revoked?
I don't know, but I'm asking. Uh, I think that, again, that's up to you all. Um, I, I think what the Alcohol Beverage Commission typically does, and you don't have to follow suit, is I think that they, they do a set number of days the first time. And then if it continues, then they eventually revoke the license completely.
So your recommendation is what?
Five hundred and a thousand.
I'll make a motion in that effect.
I'll say for the first offense and a thousand for the, the one that was the second.
Yeah, I'll say, yeah, Mr. Hatmaker.
All right, I've got a motion, a second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Fane?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mayor Stankfield?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there any further business before the beer board? Everybody motioned, yeah.
Motion, Jim.